Good afternoon, Nevada. The Senate will come to order. The Secretary will call the roll.
Senator Brooks.
Here.
Senator Cancela.
Here.
Senator Canizaro.
Here.
Senator Dennis.
Here.
Senator Don Darrow Loop.
Here.
Senator Ganser.
Here.
Senator Gokicchia.
Here.
Senator Hammond.
Here.
Senator Hanson.
Here.
Senator Hardy.
Here.
Senator Harris.
Here.
Senator Kiekeffer.
Here.
Senator Orangehall.
Here.
Senator Parks.
Here.
Senator Pickard.
Here.
Senator Ratty.
Here.
Senator Scheible.
Here.
Senator Settlemeyer.
Here.
Senator Spearmann. Here. Senator Washington.
Here.
Senator Woodhouse.
Thank you, Senator Canizaro.
Thank you, Madam President. Please indicate all senators present. They are here in the building.
Thank you, Senator Canizaro. Let the record reflect, there are 21 senators present. Please rise for the prayer by Senator Scott Hammond. Thank you.
Our kind and gracious heavenly Father, we, few of my servants, are here upon this floor in order that we might contemplate the things that need to be done for those who have put their trust in us. And we pray, Father, that as we deliberate through these proceedings and as we hear the presentations and try to understand the information that's been put before us, that we always keep in mind those who have put their trust in us and who continue to try to help us in order to accomplish this job, that we might remember everyone and do our best for those who are counting on us to come through with a plan that will help ease the pain and suffering that is going on throughout our state. We pray, Father, that we will work together, one with another, to try and come up with the solutions that will best fit the needs of the people today. Thankful for the many blessings we have received, namely the talents that we have. And we may we continue to use those talents to bless the lives of others. We pray this day in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Senator Hammond. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. Order of Business Number Three, reading and approval of the Journal. By previous order of the Senate, the reading of the Journal is dispensed with. The President and Secretary are authorized to make the necessary corrections and additions. Order of Business Number Nine, motions, resolutions, and notices. Senator Canizaro.
Thank you, Madam President. Pursuant to Senate Special Rule Number Four, I authorize Senator Spearmann to use remote technology systems to attend, participate, vote, and take any other action than proceedings of the Senate and the Committee of the Whole.
Thank you. Thank you, Senator Canizaro. Senator Canizaro, did you have more to say?
Yes, Your Honor.
Another motion?
Of course. Not in court. Thank you, Madam President. I move that Kurt Schrader, K-O-L-O-T-V, be accepted and accredited as a member of the press, that he be allowed to use the appropriate media facilities in the Legislative Building.
Thank you, Senator Canizaro. Senator Canizaro has made a motion. Do we have any remarks? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Senator Canizaro.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that the Senate resolve itself into a Committee of the Whole to consider Senate Bill Number Three and other matters related to the state's budget shortfall, with Senator Canizaro serving as Chair and Senator Ratty serving as Vice Chair.
Thank you, Senator Canizaro. Senator Canizaro has made a motion. Are there any remarks? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. We shall go into a longer-than-short recess.
The Committee of the Whole will now come to order. We are going to proceed with the bill hearing on our agenda for Senate Bill Number Three. So we will open up the hearing on Senate Bill Number Three. We will first be hearing from Melanie Young, the Executive Director of the Nevada State Department of Taxation, and Susan Brown, the Director of the Governor's Finance Office, for a presentation on Senate Bill Number Three and to have them walk us through that. I will then open up the floor for any questions from members of the committee. We will also have from our Legislative Council Bureau Fiscal Staff, Russell Guindin, on standby for any questions if we need him to answer any of our questions. And so at this time, we'll go ahead and either Ms. Young or Ms. Brown, whenever you're ready to proceed, you may go ahead and begin.
Hi. Can you hear me?
We can hear you and see you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Canizaro and members of the Senate Committee as a whole. Thank you for the opportunity to come before you on SB Three. This bill does three things. And the way we'll separate it out, it makes changes to the net proceeds of minerals taxes, the government services tax, and implements a tax amnesty program. So what I would like to do at this time is turn it over to Jeff Mitchell, my Deputy Director over Local Government Services, and he's going to discuss the sections on the net proceeds of minerals. And then Director Brown will uncover the sections on the government services tax, and then I will present the amnesty program. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Jeff Mitchell with the Department of Taxation. That's J-E-F-F-M-I-T-C-H-E-L-L. And I will walk through the different sections of this bill dealing with net proceeds of minerals taxes. Section One of this bill amends NRS 362-110. This section will temporarily require the mine operator to report the net proceeds on behalf of the royalties received. It also removes a reporting requirement of the recipient. It becomes effective July 1, 2021, and expires June 30, 2023. Section Two amends NRS 362-115. This requires a payment of taxes due on the annual estimate of the gross yield in net proceeds. Payment may be reduced by any credit due that the taxpayer has pursuant to NRS 362-130. And taxes paid for royalties may be deducted from the royalty payments mines make to the royalties. It allows for quarterly adjustment reports and payments. Those quarterly adjustment reports would be on March 31st, June 30th, September 30th, and December 31st with payments following 30 days after the filing of the quarterly report. It becomes effective on passage and approval and expires on June 30, 2023. Section Three of the bill amends NRS 362-130. This governs the certification of the net proceeds. And we shall deduct any estimated tax paid in the prior calendar year in the adjustments from the balance of the tax due on that certification. The certification of net proceeds shall be sent to the owner or operator of the mine. And if the taxes paid from the annual estimate in adjustment is less than 90% of the amount certified, the penalty of 10% of the amount of the underpayment must be included unless there are certain requirements that are met where the penalty would not be applied. That is, if the estimated taxes paid in the prior calendar year is equal to or greater than the total liability of the operation or the preceding calendar year, or if the person files quarterly reports in a timely manner and the total of all the payments received exceeds 90% of the amount certified. Overpayments received must be credited towards the payment due of March 1 of the next calendar year. This would become effective on July 1, 2021, and expire on June 30, 2023. Section Four and Section Five are very similar in nature. Section Four amends NRS 362-170. This section indicates how the appropriations are to be made to the different entities which are owed the tax. It becomes effective upon passage but expires June 30, 2021. This deals with first year prepayments are in effect. Section Five mirrors the language in Section Four, except for a couple of different differences. It allows us to deal with the appropriations that we receive from the net proceeds of minerals after that first year of the accelerated payment. Section Five becomes effective July 1, 2021, and expires on June 30, 2023. Section Seven of the bill and Section Eight of the bill deal with the appropriations of the taxes when we receive them to the general fund as well as to the local entities. Section Seven allows the mine operators and dictates that they shall pay the NPM tax for the calendar year 2020 by May 10. Mine operators shall also pay an estimated net proceeds of minerals tax for calendar year 2021 by March 1, 2021. The county appropriation for that calendar year will be the amount determined before this change and the estimated tax amount determined by this change. It is effective upon passage and approval. Section Eight deals with the appropriation when the revisions of this bill sunset and we go back to a payment in a year is on the net proceeds of minerals or how the tax currently stands. So this section allows and indicates to us how to collect and apportion those taxes to the different entities. The Department of Taxation shall reduce the amount of tax due from the taxpayer by any estimated payment made during the calendar year 2023 and any unused credit from the previous overpayment of that. The amount appropriated to each county during the calendar year 2024 must be reduced by the amount appropriated for the estimated payments made during calendar year 2023. So this allows us to step down and away from the accelerated payment of the tax there. Sections Nine, Ten, and Eleven deal with the, and Section Six deal with government service tax, of which Ms. Susan Brown will speak to in just a minute. Section Twelve of this bill indicates the following dates on when things become effective and when things expire. This lays out the expiration of the accelerated payments and the collection of the prepayments, with then revert back to the former method of collecting on the actual net proceeds beginning in calendar year 2024. Before I turn my time over to my colleagues to talk about the general service tax and the tax amnesty sections of this bill, I want to mention that there is an amendment being discussed that would limit the accelerated payment to the general fund portion only of the tax due, instead of the current language which requires an acceleration of full tax due. This would change the appropriation so that we would be allocating to the general fund an estimated payment as well as the actual prior year net proceeds of minerals payment. But it would appropriate to the counties only the actual prior year taxes that are due and not an estimated prepayment. Those walk through the different section of the bills as it relates to the accelerated payment and net proceeds of minerals. I'll turn my back to Melanie to talk about some of the other sections of the bill.
Thank you, Jeff. For the record again, this is Melanie Young, Executive Director for the Department of Taxation. I'm not sure if Director Brown has done. She was testifying on the Assembly side earlier, so if it's all right with the Chair, I can jump into the amnesty section.
Yes. Why don't we go through that section and we can circle back for some questions.
Okay. Thank you. Again, for the record, my name is Melanie Young, Executive Director for the Department of Taxation. The amnesty section starts on Section Ten of the bill, where the department shall establish and conduct a program that would relieve a person who has not paid a tax fee or an assessment of all penalties and interest imposed. This program will operate for a 90-day period in fiscal year 2021, and we would conclude before June 30, 2021. The taxpayer shall be relieved of all penalties and interest if they request relief and pay the tax fee or assessment in full. The amnesty program only applies to taxes, fees, and assessments that are due prior to the effective date of this bill, which is on passage and approval, and will not apply to those who have already entered into any settlement agreements or offer in compromise. Additionally, this bill will not apply to a taxpayer where an audit is being conducted and they have not received a final determination. I feel that it's important to discuss why a tax amnesty program is being proposed. The tax amnesty program was last held in 2008 and 2010, and one could assume that it's time to do one again. That's just one reason. But the main reason is, since I became Director in January of 2019, I've had my eye on the accounts receivable for the department and the funding due to state, local governments, and schools. And reducing the tax debt to the state, local governments, and schools is the main goal for the Department of Taxation, and that's why this tax amnesty is being proposed. The $10 million on the books for the amnesty represents aged delinquent taxes from 60 days to two, three years, and it only represents the general fund portion of the tax. When we recently ran the aged accounts receivable amount, that number was $68.8 million. We felt we could reasonably collect 30%, which is estimated to be $20.6 million. And the $10 million of that would go to the general fund. The difference would benefit local governments and schools. To note, in the 2010 amnesty program, the department collected approximately $28.5 million, which represented 9,000 delinquent tax payments. That $28.5 million includes the general fund portion, but it was a total portion of tax. So part of that would have gone to local and schools at that time. In 2008, when the amnesty was conducted, the department collected $40.6 million, which represented over 12,000 delinquent tax payments. In closing, there are a couple important notes to make here. Without a tax amnesty, the debt may be collected, however, the funding would more than likely come in in the form of payment plans to be collected over an extended period of time. Other forms of collection, such as liens, the state might not see the benefit for years to come. Offers and compromise is a process the department handles, and we will collect the debt, but often at a reduced rate and over an extended period of time. The benefit to the taxpayer is to pay the debt and end collection efforts. Interest would not continue to accrue in decreasing the taxpayer burden. And ultimately, the state, local governments, and schools would benefit from the revenue collection. And this concludes my portion of the presentation, and I'm not sure if Director Brown is available. But if she's not, I would be willing to go through the sections for the governmental services. Doesn't sound like she's a-
Yeah, I don't know that she's-
I will cover section, except the bill. So the Section Six of the bill covers the general, or the government services tax, which revises the percent of distribution, a 50% split between general fund and the highway fund. And this section is upon passage and approval of the bill. And I do believe that there are members from the Nevada Department of Transportation on the call that can answer questions on that. Well, that concludes our presentation of SB Three, and we're available for questions. Thank you.
Okay. Let's go ahead and take members, questions from members of the committee, and we'll start, we'll start with Senators Severs, Ganser, who I believe has some questions on the amnesty program. Please, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I wanted to ask about the tax amnesty program. So you gave us some numbers from 2008 and from 2010. Do you know what the accounts receivables were at those two points in time? You'd given us the current-
Melanie-
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you for the question, Senator Ganser. I do have that information. Let me get to that.
Yeah, where I'm going with this is, right now, so first of all, those were back-to-back, and I think the first time that there was a tax amnesty program, there were only certain taxes that were allowed through that program, and then the second time, there were more taxes allowed as far as amnesty. And when you, when you look at that, $28.5 and $20.6 million is a lot of money. And now we haven't had one for 10 years. And so you had mentioned that, I think, our accounts receivables right now are, I think you said $60.8 million, and then you took a factor of 30%. So, and then half of that would go to the general fund, and roughly half would go to state and local government. So I guess I'm wondering about the level of accounts receivable in comparison to when we probably ran the 2008, 2008, or maybe even the 2010, because I think the estimate seems to be conservative. I'm not sure if there's more room as far as a line item above the $10 million, even being conservative, given that we haven't had one in 10 years. And when we ran them back-to-back, we still had over $20 million in 2008 and 2010. So that's why I'm asking about the accounts receivable back in those years.
Senator Ganser, Director Young, for the record, thank you for the question. Unfortunately, I'm looking through my notes, and I thought I had written down the accounts receivable from back then, which was a lot less. So our accounts receivable extends at this point in time, if I recall, it's about $350 billion is what the accounts receivable-
Okay. So our- Go ahead.
That is a shocking number. The amount that we estimated we collected was $68.8 million, and that was our current accounts receivable from a 60-day delinquency period to a three-year delinquency period. The department felt that anything greater than four years, we might not likely be able to collect on, but it's entirely possible. And what we would be willing to do is work with your fiscal staff to determine and take a deeper dive on the accounts receivable, to see if that is something we could increase the amount on them.
Thank you. And just so I have these numbers now, so right now, our accounts receivable are sitting at about $350 million. And ones that you consider more current, which are 60 days to three years old, is running at about $60.8 million. And to come up with the number that you thought potentially could be collected conservatively, you took 30%. So you, so 30% of the 20, or the 60, excuse me, you landed about 20.6, half going to the general fund, half to local government. You know, I would appreciate you taking a deeper dive, especially if the accounts receivable were so much less in 2008 and 2010, because we are, we are 10 years out from that point. And I do think taxpayers want to pay what's due, but sometimes they get overwhelmed by the interest and penalties, and maybe they don't even know how to address it. So if you have a program set up, I would imagine there's quite a few folks who'd be out there who would want to participate. And so I think this is a great idea, because it's better to get some money versus no money. And offering this opportunity may well bring in substantial dollars. So thank you for taking a deeper dive, or offering to take a deeper dive on the numbers and a potential reestimate of what we could put on the books as far as the budget changes. Thank you.
Thank you. If I could take an opportunity to clarify, I'm not sure if I was saying it right, but the accounts receivable is 68.8% was the number that we used. So I wanted to make sure if I had said earlier it was 60.8, I wanted to clarify.
Thank you. I probably wrote it down wrong. Thank you.
Senator Settlemeyer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had two questions, one pertaining to the concept of the tax amnesty. You discussed with my colleague who asked a previous question, that she had mentioned in the past, it was only realized in the 2008 to, you know, sales tax, MBT, and so forth. The amount, the number you gave for total tax receivable, you know, will that apply to all taxes then? So that entire amount, so everything that's an account receivable, if it's a no tax, will all those taxes be able to apply now, rather than just some of the limited ones? Or what's the concept?
Thank you, Melanie Young, for the record. I appreciate the question, Senator Settlemeyer. It would apply to any taxes the department has on account receivable.
Okay. That's good to know. That should actually bring in quite a bit more. I appreciate that. My second question unfortunately isn't for you. If with indulgence of the Chair, I had a question on the net proceeds of mines. Take that as a yes? Okay. That being said, on net proceeds of mines, I know some of the smaller mines that are just starting up, or if you're going to look at an amendment, they were kind of interested in the concept that if they had not paid any net proceeds of mines at all in the previous year, that they would not be, fall into this category, because they have no money that they've actually brought in. So they're a little concerned that it's hard to pay next year's taxes when they've never brought in a dollar yet. So I didn't know if that was something you'd been talked to about by the Mining Association and others, or if this is the first time you've heard of it.
Thank you, Senator Settlemeyer. Jeff Mitchell, for the record. That question was posed on if it's a new operator, whether or not the prepayment should apply to that in consideration with the amendment. The current language allows for those quarterly trups to occur throughout the year. And so they could estimate a zero amount and then true up as the revenue starts coming in. And so we thought that it might be already addressed, the issue with current language as it sits. That is something that we were open for discussion.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Senator Orangehall.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. And I want to thank all the folks from taxation for presenting Senate Bill Three today. My question, I think, is for the folks from Nevada Department of Transportation who are on the line. It's regarding Section Six. And I'm looking at the fiscal note for Senate Bill Three, and it talks about an estimated reduction of revenue to the highway fund of $21,417,256. reduction of revenue to the highway fund of $21,417,256. And the fiscal note seems optimistic that hopefully no projects will suffer, but I just wondered what the folks from transportation think might be the effect of that, that loss of revenue to the highway fund.
This is Susan Brown, Director of the Governor's Finance Office. I'm not sure if NDOT is on the telephone at the moment. I did get a text message from them this morning that this would not impact any of the projects this fiscal year.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. That was just my concern, whether some projects that are needed might not be able to go forward. Thank you.
Senator Hardy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was looking at the compromise, the compromise and the final notice in section 10. I guess the, the intent is twofold of the amnesty. One is to get money in sooner than later, as well as get it in, but also to give the person who needs the amnesty a way to do that. So I was curious what the rationale was that would not allow the payment plan to be exempted if the debtor so chose. For instance, whichever one is less, the sooner we get it in, the better. And then the final notice of deficiency determination may happen after the, quote, "deadline" of 90 days. And they would be at the mercy of having the department make the final notice of deficiency before that? Or how does that work? I mean, why are we exempting those people who may benefit from this, and we may get more revenue in, rather than waiting for a compromise that may not be in their best interest or the best interest of the state, getting money in sooner?
Thank you, Senator Hardy. Again, Melanie Young, for the record, Director of the Department of Taxation. I believe there were similar provisions back in 2008 and 2010 in those bills as it relates to the amnesty. And on the amnesty, what we've done when it comes to collecting on payment plans and offers and compromise, we've already made negotiations that probably already would have eliminated or reduced the amount of penalty and interest due at that time. And based on working with the taxpayers, when we enter into a payment plan and or an offer and compromise, we look at their financial records and determine how much they could... So at that time, we go into an agreement on, a lot of times, a monthly amount. It could include a lump sum amount with smaller monthly amount payments. And so there have been numerous negotiations to that point in time. So I, to the best that I think I can answer your question is that we've already made negotiations with those taxpayers, and that based on their financial situation, an amnesty might not necessarily work with them.
Is there a problem with giving the amnesty to the payer, a option if paying now is better than the compromise deal that they made?
Thank you again, Melanie Young, for the record. You know, I would say that they've already received the benefit of probably waiving the penalties and interest. You know, I guess we would have to look into further how much revenue is already identified as a part of a payment plan or an offer and compromise, and would consider working with your fiscal staff on that, those questions.
Thank you.
Senator Picker.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And if I can just ask a follow-up to Senator Hardy's question, just to make sure I understand. So do I understand, then, that there's no opportunity for an offer and compromise under this bill? It's pay all of the taxes in arrears, or there's no opportunity to take advantage of the, the opportunity?
Thank you, Senator Picker, for the question. Again, Melanie Young, Executive Director for the Department of Taxation. Just a little bit of conversation about an offer and compromise. We negotiate with taxpayers on a very regular basis. And an offer and compromise means that we've compromised on, at times, a debt that is even lower than the taxes due. So the goal of the amnesty is to collect the taxes due to the state and waive the penalties and interest. So if a taxpayer doesn't feel that the amnesty will work for them, we would continue to work on an offer and compromise and address those concerns with the taxpayers. That's what we do on a regular basis.
All right. Very good. Thank you. That makes a lot of sense. And then, Madam Chair, if I can ask an unrelated question? Thank you. I want to follow up on Senator Orenshaw's question, because that's concerning to me as well. My concern is that when we look at the government service, and this is a question probably more appropriate for NDOT, but it appears they're not on the call, but maybe you know. Given they're losing $21 million in potential highway revenues, do we know how many projects this is going to affect? And then the downstream, how many jobs are lost because of, of this revenue drop? Do we know the, do we have any data as to that?
Susan Brown, for the record, I don't have any data on that. The information that I have is that this $21 million will not impact any planned project at this point in time.
All right. And I understand that may not affect any immediate jobs or immediate projects, but this is for the 2021 fiscal year, and I can't imagine that the department or NDOT has typically $21 million sitting without some plan for it. So this has got to affect them somehow. Do you know if they have figured out? I know in, in prior meetings, they've talked about their list of priorities of projects. In fact, when we went through some of the budget sweeps and the reversions, they talked about that. And so there's got to be some list somewhere of prioritized projects, and the cutoff point has probably shifted. How do we get that?
Susan Brown, for the record, I can reach out to NDOT for that.
All right. Thank you. I know you've got a lot on your plate from things we've asked you for, so I hate to add another one, but I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Yes, they are listening, but they haven't been able to get in.
Senator Scheibl.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to go back to the first portion of this bill that addresses the net mineral proceeds taxes and the new payment schedule. And I kind of want to take a step back, because some of us work with these numbers all the time, and some of us don't. And so I want to make sure that my understanding is correct, that there is a constitutional provision that caps the total taxes on the mine, on any particular mine, at 5%, right?
Jeff Mitchell.
And then we have the statutory provisions that allow for some mines to be taxed less than 5% on their net proceeds. Is that also correct?
So the constitutional provision is cap on net proceeds of minerals. But the tax rate varies based upon the level of deductions. And those deductions are taken away from the gross to come down to the net proceeds. And where that net-to-gross ratio falls determines the tax rate that is applied against the net proceeds of minerals. The floor, the bottom tax rate is the local property tax rate where the mine is located, up to 5%, but not to exceed 5%.
Okay. And so that floor and that ceiling are set in statute as opposed to the constitution? They're set in NRS 362.130?
I believe I'd have to look at the statute. It might be 362.140, but the constitutional cap, but the floor is set in statute.
Okay. And we're not changing that floor or that cap right now. We're just moving the time that the taxes are paid to a full 12 months earlier than we would normally get them. Is that, am I understanding this correctly?
Yes. This is not an additional tax, and it's not adjusting the rate. It is an acceleration of the tax that would be due the following year to the current year.
Okay. And then at some point, does that mean we would go 24 months without receiving a tax payment in order to get back on the previous schedule?
Yes. And that would occur during calendar year 2024. The amount of tax due, there would be a true-up period, because the mines pay on an estimate. And so they would prepay in March 1st of 2023. They have the calendar year, which they actually have the production of 2023. But come calendar year 2024, we would review their returns and their deductions to determine if they made their estimate or not. So if they estimated correctly right on, there would be no taxes collected in 2024.
Okay. And can you give us kind of a rough idea, based on previous years, what number we're looking at, how much mines are paying into the general fund?
Are you looking for the number of operators that are, I apologize, Jeff Mitchell, for the record, the number of operators that are paying into this tax, or the dollar amount associated with that?
Both.
Both. So approximately during the 2019 calendar year, we had right around 103 operators of mines. We also had an additional approximate 390 royalty holders that also paid into this tax. The total tax due for the 2019 calendar year was approximately 122 million, of which a portion of that was the state general fund. The state general fund in 2019... Give me just a moment. The general fund portion was $57,251,579.
So in 2019, all of the mining companies here in Nevada paid a, an aggregate of just over $57 million into our general fund. Do we have reason to believe that number would be higher or lower going into the future?
Perhaps I will.
Oh, I think you, oh, you cut.
Word, I apologize.
You're cutting out, yeah, you're cutting out just a bit.
If Mr. Russell Gindon is on the phone, he might be able to speak to the projection process, as well as the estimates that were arrived for future years, and how that was determined, and the amounts that we determined. I apologize for...
This is Russell Gindon, Principal Deputy Fiscal Analyst with the Fiscal Analysis Division, Legislative Council Bureau. And Senator, it's a very good question. The tax tends to have a relative amount of volatility to it, as you can tell from the structure of the tax, being a net tax. And then the different rates that can come into play with regards to generating the portion that belongs to the state general fund. So as, as Mr. Mitchell said, the actual amount for FY, FY '20, based on calendar year 2019's business activity period, was the $57.3 million. We're, the consensus estimate that was done by taxation and the Budget Office and your fiscal staff for FY '21, so that will be based on calendar '20, we, we think that will be around about $62.7 million. But then we have it falling back to about $54.5 million for that extra payment that will occur in FY '21, based on calendar '21. And the, the reason for the fallback is, right, gold is running pretty close to almost $1,800 an ounce. I think to the first 10 months of July, it's averaging about $1,790. So, right, we think calendar year 2020 is going to be a pretty good year. But then you, hopefully by then, right, that things will start to recover, maybe there'll be the vaccine. So then, as the economy starts to recover, probably the gold prices will start to settle back a little. And because of that, then, we think calendar '21 won't be quite as good a year as calendar '22. But again, that's your staff, Budget Office, taxation, trying to think through the future of where this tax could go. So hopefully that answers your question. And then I guess the final thing I would say is that in the last three to four years, the general fund portion, it fluctuates somewhere between $50 million to $60 million, in that range.
Thank you. That's, that's really helpful. And final question, also very broad, but it seems to me, and I just want to check for understanding, that there is room within these tax structures without a constitutional amendment to, and I'm not saying we should or shouldn't do this, but we simply could increase the amount of taxes that mining companies pay, and that would result in a net larger contribution to the general fund.
I'll probably handle that one, Jeff. So as has been pointed out here, the, the tax rate cannot be amended. The maximum tax rate is constitutionally at the 5%. And so as Mr. Mitchell has pointed out, the general fund portion is the difference between the tax rate dictated by law, and then the minimum tax rate, which is the property tax rate. And so the general fund gets that difference, with the maximum rate being the 5% constitutional. So on this tax, you can do something like, that's being proposed in SB three, you change the tax structure from being based on the actual proceeding calendar year to being an estimate based on the current calendar year, and that allows you to pick up an additional payment in the fiscal year in which you do that. But then if you ever want to turn the tax back, such as this bill proposes, to sunset on June 2023, then the fiscal year after that sunset, you'll have what we call a hole. There'll be, there won't be the tax payment, there'll only be the true-up payments if any. So then, my last thing would be, the ability for additional tax to come from the net proceeds of minerals is to change the thresholds that are in 362.140, as to what determines the rate based on your net-to-gross ratio, or removing some of the deductions, which would then increase the amount of net proceeds that would be subject to whatever tax the mining operator would be subject to.
Okay. That, that does help clarify, and I appreciate your indulgence, both to the presenters and Madam Chair.
Great, thank you. And my understanding is that we now also were able to get NDOT connected with all of us, and so we should have Felicia Denny on the phone. I will turn it back over to, first Senator Orenshaw, and then Senator Picker, to follow up on your previous questions. Senator Orenshaw.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. And my questions for Nevada Department of Transportation had to do with the fiscal note for Senate Bill Three. The fiscal note mentions the projected reduction of 21.4, approximately 21.4 million for fiscal year 2021. It says, "If additional reallocation is determined to be necessary above this level, or the department is unable to issue bonds, a reduction in planned roadway projects will result. If necessary, the department will carefully review our plans to determine the course of action, which has the least impact to public safety and the mobility of people and the goods and services which drive our economy." And I just wonder if NDOT thinks this loss, you know, is going to result in any projects being postponed, delayed, or scrapped? Or will they be able to weather this, this loss of revenue in terms of the projects? And certainly, you know, a lot of great work being done down in southern Nevada and all over the state, and I just wonder how that will affect that.
Good afternoon. This is Felicia Denny from the Nevada Department of Transportation. I'm the Assistant Director of Administration. And so... And so that is correct, we're not anticipating that this will have an impact on our program. The Department of Transportation does keep reserves in the highway fund to cover emergencies and allowing for flexibility in project delivery. And so we're not anticipating that we would be required to cut any of our projects. And by the way, thank you for saying how much you appreciate our project. And we believe we'll be able to continue on. I hope I answered your question properly.
Thank you very much, thank you, Madam Chair. And yes, over near my area, there's a project on Lamb Boulevard, which I think is going to help a lot, thank you.
Thank you, Senator Pickard.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Ms. Denny. I was just following up actually with, looking for a little bit more detail as to what those projects are. I just, I, if the, NDOT has $21 million in reserves that the governor has not swept already, that's kind of concerning. But in that, there are, a $21 million hit has got to affect some projects in the future. Unless you're saying that you have 121 million sitting in the bank that would have stayed there unused. Can you tell me, is there a list of priorities that the, the department has where they would just move a cutoff line if they weren't able to bond to recover what didn't come from the GST? How is it that, I guess the question becomes, how is it that this couldn't affect ongoing operations?
Hello again, Felicia Denny, for the record. We, we do have a procedure to go ahead and work to prioritize projects and move forward. We also have projects approved by our transportation board. And, and you're correct, what we do is we prioritize based upon needs of the state, the cost of the project, and, and safety and other variables. And so we do keep a minimum highway fund balance target of one month of operating expenditures for all highway fund agencies and a month and a half of capital expenditures for NDOT as a minimum balance. We frequently do exceed that at fiscal year end because it does drop when we're in the busy construction season. So what we would do is, as we're looking forward and we're seeing those future revenues potentially drop, we would work on that prioritization and, and work along with our transportation board to figure out what projects would be best to move forward.
All right, thank you, that's consistent with what we heard in the reserve portion of the testimony on the first day. Can you tell me how much NDOT has currently in reserves?
Hello again, Felicia Denny, for the record. We finished out fiscal year 2019 with an ending highway fund unrestricted balance of 340 million. Our target at that time, I believe, was around 142 million, so it was quite higher above. However, some of that funding was from other agencies that were unable to expend their budgets or didn't expend their budgets. And we also had several projects, such as the Spaghetti Bowl Express, that were delayed, where those revenues that are in the fund are expected to be expended this year versus last year.
All right, I appreciate that. And I'm looking through the capital improvement projects that were swept. I just, I don't remember seeing a $340 million sweep in terms of completed projects that are rather reversions. Can you tell me if those were included in the CIP reversions that we've already discussed here?
I'm sorry, this is Felicia Denny again, perhaps I misunderstood the question. Those were not reversions. That was our highway fund ending balance that we, we had at the end of fiscal year 19. Fiscal year '20 hasn't closed yet, so I don't have a figure for you. But that was the amount of unrestricted funds in the highway fund available for the department, DMV, DPS, and, and other associated items to have in, in the fund above our minimum balance of approximately 142 that we shoot for. And again, that ending balance is not necessarily our low cash balance, which is often around 130 less than that. But it, it is in reserve for projects moving forward so that we can address timing issues for projects. I hope that better explains.
Yeah, I think it does. And so if I understand correctly, then that ending fund balance that you carry forward, that's part of the budgeting process. You, you plan on a certain amount, and of course, that will fluctuate from year to year. But you plan on that moving forward in order to maintain liquidity or cash flow capability in the projects going forward, is that correct?
Yes, thank you, you, you stated that much better than I did. Thank you, again, Felicia Denny, for the record.
All right, and, and so then my final question would be, if you are carrying $340 million forward, is that more than capable of absorbing this, the impact of the, of this diversion, if you will, of the $21 million amount that would be moved from what was going to go into the highway fund, into the general fund? That 340 million is more than enough to absorb that?
Again, Felicia Denny, for the record, yes, we believe that we can absorb this and, and be able to move forward with the projects that we have going on.
All right, thank you very much, thank you, Madam Chair.
Senator Gogetia.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I, I'm very interested to see what the amendment looks like that would exempt local government or, from the prepayment. I'm a little concerned as I look at the bill, I've got a couple of questions. Number one, I was wondering why we struck the recipients of royalties out. And I know in the past, they were required to list what, what royalties they received and what projects they were on. And I, I just see they pretty much kind of lumped them together, and I didn't know what the rationale for that was. And then, as I look at the bill, it clearly, not only it's about prepayment, but it also encourages overpayment, that if you're only within 90% and you suffer a 10% penalty. The real problem with local government is, again, they budget annually. So if they receive the money upfront, have to run a year, when we do hit that true up period, it can be very detrimental to some of these small rural counties. I know when we did this in '09 and '11, the actual true up, there were a number of counties that owed money in the true up that they weren't able to, well, they had to pay it, so they did pay it, but it decimated their budget. So I'm very interested in looking at that amendment. But also the question is, why did they exempt the requirement for royalty holders to file their list as they have present, previously?
Thank you for the question, Senator Gogetia. This is Jeff Mitchell for the record from the Department of Commerce. The royalty holders, when we go to a prepayment system, there is a technical issue with them being able to actually estimate and prepay because they are not holders of that information on what they are going to receive for royalty. And so that was why the consideration is there's difficulty in them estimating and prepaying on the royalty account. So we diverted that prepayment amount, the mines to pay on their behalf.
Thank you. Yes, that makes a lot of sense to me. There was no way they would have known what the mine was going to do. But the mining company will be required to bring the prepayment on the behalf of their royalty holders. Is that correct?
Yes, Jeff Mitchell for the record.
That's good, and you want to give me any insight, Mr. Mitchell, on what the amendment looks like? Or are we just going to leave the, the local governments out, which would suit me fine? Again, the true up, as you well know, can be detrimental to local government.
Yes, thank you for the question, Senator. Jeff Mitchell for the record. That is the gist of what the amendment is trying to address, is leaving local governments out from receiving that estimated portion of taxes due. And therefore, the hole or the true up would also be excluded from that for the local entities. As you mentioned, it is a very difficult tax to administer, and there's a lot of moving parts there. So I'm not entirely comfortable on the specifics at this time until there are further work. My apologies for that.
Oh, that's fine, I thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
Senator Ready.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, a quick question to follow up on a line of questioning, I think, from Senator, Assistant, my colleague from Douglas County. That guy. I'm interested, I just really don't have any sense of how often a new mine starts. And so in the concern on new mines, just not understanding, it's not like a coffee shop, you know, just go set up a business. So how often do we get a new mine in a typical year?
Thank you for the question, Senator Jeff Mitchell for the record. That depends a little bit on how we define what a new mine is. A lot of the smaller operators, they may have production in one year, but no production for a couple of years and then come back into production. There is also development of mines. Those development of mines on a large scale are a lot rarer than those that come in and out of production. The numbers are fairly low. The operators that we have from year to year vary between 100, 120, depending on whether or not they're producing for that specific calendar year. But we have variation of those numbers at that range.
Great, that's, that's helpful for me to understand, thank you. Shifting to the GST portion of the bill, I, I just need a, again, just a basic education on how we work on the GST ending fund balance and how it might be different because of the nature of the work that's done using that fund than, say, the general fund ending fund balance. So I know with general ending fund balance, we generally want to make sure that we're trying not to drop anywhere below 5%. But it sounds to me like we do things a little bit differently with this account for good reasons. I would just like to understand how we approach that and what the reasoning is behind that, if, if that, if you could provide that. And then perhaps, just so I can get a sense of it, what is, what is our minimum dollar amount right now? And what would that be as a percentage, just because I'm more accustomed to thinking about it from a general fund perspective? Hope that was clear.
Hi, so this is Felicia Denny at the Nevada Department of Transportation. And I want to make sure I understand your question correctly. I think I did, I'll do my best to answer. The Nevada Department of Transportation, the DMV, and the Department of Public Safety are the primary agencies that utilize highway funds. And of that, the Department of Transportation spends about 80% of those funds. But we all work together as we're going through the budget process. We look ahead each biennium, and we try to retain a minimum cash balance of one month of operating expenditures, which is pretty much everything other than our capital program and a month and a half of capital expenditures that have been budgeted on average. And so we shoot to stay a bit above that, knowing that minimum cash and minimum fund balance are a little different. And during the middle of the year, when we finish with construction season, that balance is a little lower than year end, when we capture the measure for the budget. And so that, that's the formula that we use. And, and I'm not sure what percentage it works out to be, probably seven and a half or more percent. The GST revenue is one of the revenues that is deposited into the highway fund. And so prior to enacting this bill, the highway fund receives 75% of that revenue with 25% going into the general fund. So as we see that revenue enter the fund and we're planning our budget, we take that into account as we're, we're figuring out what we can expend going forward and what we, you know, want to keep, to retain, to have on hand in case there's an emergency or projects move forward quickly, more quickly than we expected, or say federal revenue has bounced from anticipated. And so that's how we work to keep a balance. There's not really a GST account per se. It's a source that goes into either the highway fund or the general fund. And each fund has its, its way of, of making sure that we don't dip too low. I hope that, that answers your question.
It does, thank you. I think then if we just take it one step forward, so then if that's how you're managing your cash flow and sort of the standards that you use, then how are we, is it just because it's a much longer lead time on the projects that you're able to still do those even though we're contemplating moving some of that GST over? Or is it because the GST is, at least this delta of the GST is a relatively smaller part of your overall budget? Or why logically can we not do, does this portion of moving the GST not affect your ability to do projects?
Well, you hit the nail on the head, again, Felicia Denny, for the record. A little bit of all of the above, although it's quite a bit of funding. It, it is relative to some of the other funding sources. There's, there's quite a bit more that does go into the highway fund. NDOT's been very fortunate in that we've been able to capture additional federal aid that maybe other states couldn't use, and that has kind of helped us to shore up our reserves a bit. And there is a very long window, as you pointed out, too, between planning for projects and the dollars going out the door. And, and so we're able to absorb the impact a little bit better than if we didn't have that longer window.
Thank you very much, I appreciate having the better understanding.
Senator Severs Cancer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I had some more questions about sort of the ending fund balance. With the understanding that you do plan projects many years in advance, I think what I heard you say is that you typically, you need to have about $142 million at the, at the end of the year, and that in 2019, you had about $340 million, is that correct?
That is correct, although I do want to clarify, the, the amount that we shoot for is our minimum cash balance. And we, we look at the, the fund balance target as well. And the minimum cash during the middle of the year, say for '19, was, well, I don't have that in front of me, but it was over $100 million less. And so we take that into account, too. So we frequently end the year with a higher than minimum fund balance because we know about the timing, when the June 30th comes into play and everything's been posted. That's as we're starting into construction season. So we look at both the fund balance and the cash balance to try to make sure we have sufficient reserves so that we can pay contractors, so we can weather some of the emergencies that we've been having.
Thank you, you know what might be helpful is to get your projections for ending fund balances because you, you pay, you plan so far out for maybe fiscal year '21, '22, '23, just to get an idea. And if, if you have an estimate of, of sort of where the bottom is that you'll hit cash flow wise, too, that would be helpful. And maybe that's hard to estimate, but I'm, I, I know a lot of transportation organizations have to plan. They do have like a five-year plan and then a 20-year plan. So again, ending fund balances for fiscal '21, '22, '23, and then maybe a projection of where you bottom out as far as cash flow. And then I believe you've got a requirement for a federal match and that you have a lot more dollars that come in from other sources. And so And so an estimate of what the requirement, if that's 10% to 90% of what the federal match is, to make sure that you could continue projects? I don't know if you have that off the top of your head.
Hello, again, Felicia Denny, for the record. We have given the Budget Office our projections for 20, through 2021. And moving forward, we can provide projections. We don't have budgets for the other entities, but we can estimate them. But we have already provided 2021 to the Governor's Finance Office, and we can work moving forward. I was trying to take notes on everything you needed, and I'm not sure I caught it all, but you wanted to look at cash and fund balances moving through 2023, was it?
Yes.
Or farther out?
Thank you. I guess we're asking about current projects right now, but because you have to plan so far in advance, I sort of wanted to know where you were going to be another couple of years out, as well as cash flow, and then what the match is. And you'd also mentioned that part of the funds that come in go to the Department of Public Safety and to the DMV. And I think we're all concerned about making sure public safety is preserved, because they don't get a lot of funding. And with this transfer or this reallocation, is the Department of Public Safety going to be hit substantially, or are you going to try to hold them harmless, given that you have enough money for your projects?
This is, again, Felicia Denny, for the record, DPS would not be impacted. DPS, DMV, the Transportation Authority, all of those budgets are figured out prior to End dot looking at our project. And so they would not be impacted. And our federal match on most things is only 5%. On planning and a few other projects, it's 20%. And so End dot has a very generous federal amount of money in that we're able to put a lesser match down than some other states. However, sometimes we will put out projects where maybe we have enough funding, although the match is only 5%, well, we'll put in 15, so we can complete the project, because we've already obligated all of our federal aid. And so you'll sometimes see projects with a higher-than-minimum match, which allows us to get more projects out.
Thank you. Thank you for answering all my-
I hope that answers your question.
Yes, thank you. Thanks for answering all those questions. And I just had, for Director Young, when you put together the tax amnesty, when you look at the counts receivable, if you would mind, can you break those out by type of tax, so that we know what's commerce, what's MBT, and so forth? Thank you both.
Thank you.
Senator Dennis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I have just a couple of questions. Let's see, since we're on the transportation, I just had a, I'm just wondering, by shifting the $21 million to the general fund, how does that impact? Because you just talked about federal funds and match. If we don't expend those, do we miss out on those federal funds for future projects? Is that, and do we know what that represents?
Hello, again, Felicia Denny, for the record. End dot always prioritizes projects to use all of our federal funding first. First of all, it's a smart thing to do. And so what we would do if we were in an instance where we needed to make cuts to projects, we would look at our projects that do not have any federal funds in them. We also utilize bonding for our larger projects, and interest rates are particularly low. And so that's helpful as well when we need to do larger projects like Project Neon. That was one of the strategies that we employed, but we would always make sure to expend our federal dollars.
So what it sounds like is that you're, by being able to prioritize the ones that don't have federal, that the hit on what we would lose on federal dollars isn't as big. Is that correct? Is that what I heard?
That's correct. We would not anticipate losing any federal dollars.
Perfect, thank you. All right, thank you. And then I have a question for Mr. Mitchell on the proceeds. My question there is, just, I think you had mentioned how many operators, it's something like 103, 108, something like that. Is that correct?
Thank you, Senator, for the question. Jeff Mitchell, for the record. Yes, that number of operators varies from year to year, based on a couple of different factors coming into production. So for 2019 calendar year, we had 103 total operators.
Right. So, and the way that you go about figuring out the tax rate, there are, the bigger operations that have that greater than the $4 million, they're automatically 5%. Is that correct?
That is correct.
How many of those operators do we have that are in that category?
Thank you for the question, Jeff Mitchell, for the record. I'd have to do a little analysis to get to that number. I don't have it in front of me.
But, okay. I guess what, my question is, the majority of the operators are going to be impacted by the shift, are going to be probably the ones who are in that 5% as far as what we're getting, right?
All of the operators would be prepaying the estimated net proceeds, so it'll affect them all, but it would affect the larger operators to a greater scale.
Okay, great. Thank you. Yeah, that does. That's what I was wondering. I'm just looking at how, that it doesn't matter on the rates, where they fit, they'll all pay that, but the ones that are, the 5% are the ones that are going to be making the bigger payments, correct?
Yes, those that set at the 5% rate, a greater percentage of the proceeds.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Senator Kiekefer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Much appreciated. Starting with the GST, I just want to make sure that we're clear. We're not talking about transferring an additional 25% of the government services tax over to the highway fund. This is still just the delta that was created in 2009, when we decreased the depreciation factor by 10%, right? So this isn't all of the GST. This is just a sliver of it, right?
This is Felicia, go ahead, Felicia.
Sorry. Susan Brown, for the record. Right now, the split in the GST is 75% goes to the highway fund and 25% goes to the general fund. This is proposing to change that allocation just for this fiscal year to a 50-50 split.
Right, but that's what I'm saying, is that that's not all of the GST. This is only a small piece of the GST that was changed in 2009, when we altered the depreciation factor for vehicles, right?
Senator Kiekefer, this is your staff, Russell Gindin, and maybe I can handle that one. Senator Kiekefer is correct that what we're talking about here is the portion of the GST that came from the 2009 statutory change, when we actually added 10% to the depreciation factors. And so the money that comes from that 10% delta change is the portion that's in play here. And so that's the amount that, from time to time, has been moved between the highway fund and the general fund. So it's only that portion, as Senator Kiekefer said, that we're discussing here. There is absolutely no effect on any of the GST that's paid, that is distributed to local governments or school districts. It's only that 10% portion from the 2009 legislation.
Thank you, Russell. I appreciate the confirmation on that one. And I have a question on the estimate. The fiscal note that was presented to us and is attached to the bill online from two days ago has a total impact of $21.4 million. But Ms. Brown, when you presented to us on day one of the session, you had indicated that it was going to be more than that. I think it's about a $2.3 million difference. Is this, is the fiscal note a more accurate estimate? And we've got a almost $2.5 million shortfall we're going to have to fix here?
Senator Kiekefer, if it's okay, maybe I can just handle that one, as your staff can. And then that way I can explain. It's actually the opposite. And I don't know that accuracy is the thing here. It's just, that was the number that the Nevada Department of Transportation put in the fiscal note. The number that is actually being carried on the sheets is the consensus estimate by budget and fiscal, based on our June 29 consensus estimates, is the amount that Susan Brown presented to the legislature, which is approximately $23.8 million. And that's based on us trying to analyze the effect of, through the governor, through his emergency directives, was suspending, you know, the payment of the GST, and thus changing the timing of that from FY 2020 to FY 2021. So we did try and think through that a little bit, and watching the monthly numbers as they come in. But the bottom line, the number that budget and fiscal agreed to, and that is the number that the Governor's Office and GFO are using, is approximately $23.8 million for the estimate.
Excellent, thank you. Russell, just out of curiosity, I know that highway fund, you know, gets gas tax and diesel tax as well. What is the total estimated revenue for fiscal year '21 for the highway fund?
That is actually going to be a better question for End dot, since I'm more of a general fund revenue guy, not a highway fund guy. Hi, Paul.
I love you all the same, though, Russ.
This is Felicia Denny for End dot. And so for fiscal year '21, state user fees, not including federal aid, not including the GST, is estimated to be about $508 million, which would be the fuel taxes, the driver's license, registration fees, and commercial carrier fees. The GST would be on top of that.
So state revenue of over $500 million for fiscal year '21, excluding the GST?
That is correct.
Okay. And then finally, my question on the, maybe Ms. Young, on the, for the tax amnesty program, as you're preparing a report of the AR, if we could maybe get that broken down by type of tax due, I think that would be illustrative as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Senator Kinsella.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I first have a clarifying question and then have a second question. And they both relate to the highway fund, so if the folks at End dot are still on the line, this would be mostly directed for you. The first question is making sure that it's clear and that you all feel comfortable with the way this is worded, that this is a one-time movement of dollars, and that there isn't, this does not leave room for this to happen on a continual basis.
This is Felicia Denny from the Nevada Department of Transportation, and yes, that's my understanding.
Thank you. And the second question, I know that over the course of the last few months, as a result of the pandemic, there was about $35 million in canceled projects, and we're now moving $21 million out. Is there a reason why the $21 million that is being moved could not be applied to make sure that we restart those projects, considering that they are already either underway or prepared to launch?
Felicia Denny, again, for the record. What the department proposed at our transportation board is to defer those projects. And that's what we did, because at the time, we were looking at the revenue projections for the fuel taxes, and it was projected to drop quite a bit. The projections have shored up quite a bit also, and so while still lower than anticipated, the outlook is much better. End dot has a process whereby we're putting those projects back into consideration to be ranked and considered for the 2021 program. And so they will certainly have an opportunity, again, to be ranked, and if they meet the criteria to move forward, they would certainly move forward.
Thank you.
Senator Brooks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This question is for Mr. Mitchell, and it goes back to the first part of the bill. And I, we had discussed the impact of the, tax impact of the net of the mining operations, but I was wondering, what's the gross revenue of those 103 operators before those deductions?
Thank you, Senator, for the question. Jeff Mitchell, the Department of Taxation, for the record. For the 2019 calendar year, the total gross was $7.8 billion.
Madam Chair, if I could follow up on that. So $7.8 billion gross, and then after the deductions, the net was 50 to 62 million? No, that was 2,000, that's our estimated, 57 million in the general fund. What portion, or, excuse me, what's the amount that goes to the counties that they operate in, in an aggregate?
So, thank you for the question, Jeff Mitchell, again, for the record. So gross yield for that year was $7.8 billion. There was approximately $5.5 billion in deductions. That ended up with a net proceeds of approximately 2.2, or, my apologies, $2.5 billion. And the rate is applied to that and split between the general fund and the county portions. And so the general fund tax amount was 57 million, as spoken, and the amount due to the county was approximately $61 million. And there was approximately $4 million to the state.
Mr. Mitchell, can you clarify that last statement? The $4 million to the state?
Part of the local property tax rate includes the state debt portion. And so that is not dispersed out to the county. That is held separate when we apportion the money out to the county, and that goes to the state debt.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate that.
Senator Settlemeyer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's good to hear Mr. Mitchell was just on the line. It was kind of a clarifying question. I think I'm correct, but I just wanted to get it on the record. The net proceeds of mines deals with all mines, so not just metals, but also everything from copper to lithium, but also geothermal, correct?
Jeff Mitchell, for the record, yes, that is correct.
Thank you.
Senator Hanson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a question for Mr. Gindin or Mr. Mitchell. Were any other industries singled out for an acceleration in their taxation? Or is only mining? Anybody there?
This is your staff, Russell Gindin. That is probably more a question that's appropriate for someone from GFO and/or taxation, because this proposal is being brought forward by the Governor's Office and GFO as part of the budget expansion plan. So I don't think I have the ability, as your LCP staff, to answer that question.
Okay, Mr. Mitchell, do you have any idea if any other industries were singled out? Because the Constitution does require a uniform and equal rate of taxation, and to single out one industry and force them to pay a year in advance when they haven't even had any production, to base that off of? Just kind of wondering why mining is always singled out. We did it in 2009, and my freshman year in 2011, and caused a whole series of problems in future budget years, and we tried to have the reconciliation, because they, in fact, were forced to pay substantially more than the rate would have been if it would have been just handled in a normal, normal process. So I'm just kind of curious, anybody else singled out, the unit you're aware of? My apologies if that's not a fair question to you.
Thank you, Senator, for the question. I am not aware of any others. My direct oversight is over the net proceeds of minerals, so my knowledge is limited in that aspect. I am not aware at this time.
Thank you. Well, if I could, Madam Chair, if there's anything illegal too, I would like to know why, why, how is it we can single out a single industry and force them to pay well in advance? But that's not the case for any other taxpaying bodies that I'm aware of, unless maybe there's somebody in the Governor's Office where they have actually attempted this for gaming or, you know, modified business tax, some other form of taxation. It just seems to me like we're singling out an industry because they're just small, they're rural, and they, the false assumption is that they are exceptionally lucrative. But just for this body, as they know, in fact, for example, I think it was Heckla Mining, $24 million loss. So it's not unique, it's not like these guys are all rolling in dough all the time. So, anyway, apparently, nobody knows if anybody else has been asked to accelerate their tax rate. So I was hoping I could get some answers on that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any additional questions from members of the committee at this time? I'm not seeing any. So we will go ahead and move from our testimony on the bill to our public comment. And we want to thank everyone for being on the phone to answer all of our questions and to be able to present and walk us through that bill. So thank you very much for being with us this afternoon. We are going to go ahead and proceed to public testimony on Senate Bill Number Three. Under this item, as we have been doing all week, public testimony can be presented by phone. For those of you who are watching online and wish to give testimony by phone, please refer to the committee's agenda for the directions on the dial-in. Once you dial in, you'll be entered into a queue of other callers who are waiting to testify. And just remember that you must stay on the line until it is your time to speak. Otherwise, you will lose your place in the queue. Because of our time considerations, each caller offering public testimony during this period will be limited to not more than two minutes. Of course, we're always happy to take some additional comments, should you have any in writing. In additionally, any person may also have written comments added to the meeting on the legislative website in lieu of testifying. There is an email address as well on the agenda for where you can submit your comments in writing. We are first going to take testimony for those who are in favor of Senate Bill Number Three, followed by those who are in opposition to Senate Bill Number Three. And then we will wrap up with those who are neutral on Senate Bill Number Three. I would remind everyone to carefully listen to the instructions from our very capable LCB broadcast staff, who will walk you through how to identify your support, opposition, or neutrality to Senate Bill Three. And of course, remember to state your name and spell it slowly and clearly for the record so that we can have a proper record of our public testimony. I am now going to turn it over to our Legislature Bureau Broadcast staff, who are going to help facilitate our public testimony. We'll start off with those in favor of Senate Bill Number Three.
We will start off with testimony in favor of the bill. If you are for the bill, press star nine now to raise your hand, and we will take callers in order. I repeat, if you are in favor of the bill, press star nine now to raise your hands, and we will take you in order. Madam Chair, there are no people for the bill, as of now.
Okay, thank you. We will move on to those who wish to testify in opposition to Senate Bill Number Three. If you are in opposition to Senate Bill Number Three, we will take your testimony now.
If you are against the bill, press star nine now to raise your hand, and we will take callers in order. Caller with the last three digits, 181, please state and spell your neck, spell your name for the record slowly. You have two minutes. You are now unmuted and may begin.
Hi, my name is Lalo Montoya. I'm the political director at Make the Road Nevada. We are a member-led nonprofit organization fighting to improve the quality of life of all immigrants and working families in Nevada. As our state and the world is currently grappling with this pandemic, Make the Road Nevada has worked aggressively to serve as a resource for our members and also members of the community at large in Las Vegas. The, as we look at SB Three, and we stand in opposition at the moment, is the early payment of the net proceeds on minerals is not enough. This requires bold accountability to rein in the trillion-dollar mining industry in order to raise revenue needed for Nevadans to survive this pandemic and create a more equitable Nevada where we can all prosper. The burden of trying to come up with revenue for the state has fallen on the shoulders of our working families for too long. We don't agree with the approach of deep budget cuts to an already weak safety net. The difference between life and death is who has access to adequate health care and a home to stay safe in. We are at a crossroads, and it is up to our elected officials, elected leaders, to stand with their constituents and choose the right way forward. As elected officials, we know that the weight is on your shoulders to care for your constituents, and it is a heavy one. And in this moment, we need you to lead. We're calling on your leadership to do what's right and stand with working-class Nevadans who are trying to survive. We stand in solidarity with our members and Nevadans across the state, tasked with this legislative body, a man, Senate Bill Three, to end the tax deductions and statutes for the mining industry immediately. Thank you.
Caller with the last three digits, 104, please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes, and you may begin.
My name is Maria Teresa Lieberman-Parraga, and that is M-A-R-I-A-T-E-R-E-S-A, last Thank you for having public comment on this, Madam Chair. And for the record, again, my name is Maria Teresa Lieberman-Parraga, Deputy Director of Badaborn Progress, representing over 20,000 subscribers of our network. Since the inception of our state, mining has never paid their fair share to help the state that they extract natural resources from. And it is right that they are now being singled out because they need to pay their fair share at this time more than ever in order to make sure that this state they extract resources from is a better place to live for everyone. Part of making sure that they do that is by ensuring that we remove those deductions that they are able to make. And that's why we stand opposed to this bill as written, because we need to have an amendment, as a previous comment has said that. We need to ensure that regular people in small business, we need to ensure that they cannot make these deductions, unlike regular people in small businesses in Nevada cannot. Us as a small business, small nonprofit, cannot make the types of deductions that mining corporations can. Now is time for one of the largest industries in the silver state, because they are a large industry, to keep, to stop keeping money for themselves while small businesses are struggling to survive, and Nevadans are desperate for assistance and public services while they're unemployed. We ask you to include an amendment to address these deductions and take steps to ensure mining pays their fair share once and for all. Thank you for your time.
Caller with the last three digits, 130, please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes and may begin.
Hi, my name is Jackie Chakulas, J-A-C-K-I-E-C-H-I-A-K-U-L-A-S. I wanted to speak in opposition to SB Three because it is not strong enough. I grew up in Las Vegas. The city is my home. I actually remember as a kid, a field trip to an abandoned gold mine and getting little gold candies growing up and going to the Reno airport and seeing all the happy history of gold mining in the state and cartoon miners and trinkets at tourist gift shops. We were indoctrinated growing up here as mining is part of our history, but not educated on how it's failing our future. Our mining laws basically haven't changed since 1872, when it was a pickaxe. They extract our minerals, got our land, and leave the state hardly paying any taxes, leaving Nevadans out to dry. Once gone, we can't get that back. When our casinos were shut down, the mines were in full operation. We have revenue in this state. Budget cuts are not our only option, but they will be unless our representatives continue to fail standing up to funding industry paying their fair share. We also must tackle this now because Nevada has the only operating lithium mine in the entire United States. So as we move forward into a Tesla renewable energy future, Nevada is essential and mining is necessary. If we continue to fail holding mining accountable and lack the morality to take on their corporate interests, we fail our state and future generations. SB Three does not go far enough, far enough, and it is not long-term. How long will we put this off? Please make the amendment and start the process of removing mining deductions to bring much-needed relief to this state. As already stated during questioning, it's possible now and will generate more revenue in our general fund. Thank you.
Caller with the last three digits, 279, please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes, and you may begin.
Hello, my name is Laura Martin, L-A-U-R-A-M-A-R-T-I-N. I did owe to a lot of what people said, so I don't want to repeat it. But I want to address the idea of someone being singled out. I am also tired of public education, state workers' employee salary, and our health care being singled out for cuts, some cuts that we will never heal from, in order to protect the profits of corporations and other businesses like the mining industry that use our state to enrich themselves for other operations all over the world. SB Three can be stronger. We just got the answers we needed to make it stronger, and I hope the Senate does what it needs to do to ensure that everyone is paying their fair share. And we're just not punishing, again, public education, state employees, and health care. They shouldn't be singled out either. Thank you.
Madam Chair, there are no more opponent testifiers.
Okay. And that concludes our hearing on Senate Bill Number Three. We will go ahead and close the hearing on Senate Bill Number Three.
Madam Chair.
Oh, yes, Senator Rowdy.
With all respect, I don't believe we took neutral testimony.
I believe what I heard was there wasn't anybody else on the line. Did I hear that correctly? Let's just double check. Did I hear that correctly?
Madam Chair, there are.
Sorry, go ahead.
There are no more opponent testifiers, but we do have three others on the line.
So there's, it sounds like there's three people still in the lobby, but the opponent testimony is over.
I see. I apologize, I misheard. So we will not close the hearing on that. Thank you, Senator Rowdy, for catching that. I think I was hearing that a little differently. We'll go ahead and move then to neutral testimony on Senate Bill Number Three. So anybody wishing to testify in the neutral position?
If you are in neutral of the bill, press star nine now to raise your hand, and we will call on you in order. Caller with the last three digits, 150, please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes and may begin.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman and members of the Senate. My name is Alexis Motarex, A-L-E-X-I-S-M-O-T-A-R-E-X, representing the Nevada Chapter Associated General Contractors. And I want to apologize, I thought that I had clicked into the opposition queue, but I must have had a technical glitch. We are actually opposed to Section Six of SB Three, so is it okay that I carry on? Or would you just prefer written comment at this point?
Yes, please go ahead and proceed. We'll take your testimony.
Thank you, I appreciate that. We understand and appreciate the challenging task before you in addressing this massive budget shortfall. And we too share the governor's desire to preserve as many jobs as possible in a struggling economy. And it's for that reason that we want to bring your attention to the downstream impact of redistributing approximately $21 million in GST dollars from the Highway Fund to the general fund. Every million dollars spent on highway construction and/or maintenance results in about 11 jobs and $1.7 million in total economic output. A public investment of $21 million in our highway infrastructure has a combined direct, indirect, and induced total economic output of $35 million. It creates approximately 230 jobs a year with total wages of roughly $12 million. And it generates approximately $1.5 million in tax revenue from a variety of sources such as fuel, MBT, and sales. The loss of this revenue to the Highway Fund would further compound the reduction in gas tax revenue we are already coping with due to decreased travel during the COVID shutdown. At the last board meeting, the NDOT board meeting on June 8, $34.9 million in construction projects were postponed as a result of this reduction. Taking an additional $21 million from the Highway Fund effectively puts more than 200 Nevadans out of work, which will only make Nevada's recovery that much more difficult. Again, we appreciate the weight of the decisions you must make during this difficult time. However, we also sincerely believe that preserving funding that directly translates to jobs and economic activity is in the best interest of this state. And we thank you for your thoughtful approach to this crisis.
With the last three digits, 818, please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes and may begin.
My name is Cody Cunningham, C-O-D-Y-C-U-N-N-I-N-G-H-A-M. And I want to say, I think we're focusing on the wrong things altogether in this bill, that we shouldn't be giving tax incentives to the mining industry, but we should also not be targeting them for extra taxes. I think our focus needs to be on cutting our newest departments, such as Departments of New Americans, as well as using tax breaks for the little guy, property sales, so on and so forth, rather than the big guy. You know, we talk a lot about cutting from schools, but we rarely mention that 500 administrators in CCSD make over $200,000 a year and up. And we waste over $100 million a year in overpaid administrative expenses. And then we also have two new, brand-new jets for our governor totaling in about $17 million, but I don't hear any cuts about that. It looks like we're too busy trying to cut everywhere than it actually needs to be, and the tax breaks are not appropriate to Nevada's population. Thank you.
Caller with the last three digits, 118, please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes and may begin.
My name is Laura Hale, L-A-U-R-A-H-A-L-E. I also thought I was in the opposition queue. May I proceed, Madam Chair?
Yes, it sounds like we had a couple of folks who were in that same position. So please, go ahead.
Thank you. Just this morning, I was on a Zoom session hosted by the League of Women Voters with presentations from multiple law enforcement sheriffs and chiefs in northern Nevada. Every one of them identified mental and behavioral health as an overwhelming crisis that must be addressed with more resources for behavioral health professionals in training. They all coordinate with existing programs that already strain to meet the level of demand. Now, funds for these essential coordinating programs are on the chopping block during this special session. Every one of these law enforcement agencies has been under increased demand and stress due to the COVID-19 pandemic, followed by the horrific killing of George Floyd and the subsequent protests that continue today. Now is not the time to cut funding to these programs or any other health programs. We know from the recent recession that cuts to these programs have an exponential impact that plays out over decades. Now is the time to expand Nevada's tax base to not only support these programs at current levels, but to expand them, to reinvest in our communities, to save lives and jobs, and the interdependent infrastructure that sustains us all. The mining industry in Nevada has never paid its fair share, and data show that they have not been negatively affected by the economic downturn that most businesses have felt. Rather, the price of gold continues to increase. Please amend SB Three to remove unfair deductions for the mining industry during this special session, and go even further to begin the process to amend our constitution and remove the cap on taxes that the mining industry does nothing to deserve. Thank you.
Caller with the last three digits, 237, please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes and may begin.
Marlene Lockard.
Marlene Lockard, M A R L E N E L O C K A R D, representing the Nevada Women's Lobby. Much of my testimony has been given by others, so I will not be redundant and repeat it. Just to put on the record that we recognize with COVID-19 and this unprecedented impact to our budget, that cuts are necessary. But we feel strongly that it should be a combination of cuts and new revenue. So I echo the others that have stated to review the deductions for the mining tax that are currently in statute and can happen today, and lay the groundwork to begin a constitutional amendment to remove the cap from the Constitution. Thank you very much.
Caller with the last three digits, one three zero, please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes and may begin.
Good afternoon, my name is Christine Saunders, C H R I S T I N E S A U N D E R S. Like a few before me, I did not make it through when the opposition was called, but would like to continue. I am here on behalf of the Progressive Leadership Alliance of Nevada in opposition to SB three. The early payment of the net proceeds on minerals is not good enough when our state continues to let mining have lucrative tax breaks and get by without paying their fair share. Nevada is the fourth-largest producer of gold in the world, and when the market crashed early this year, gold soared to almost 1,800 per ounce, the highest they've seen since 2011. In this moment of shared sacrifice, we need to make mining corporations pay their fair share by removing their direct deductions. According to the most recent net proceeds on minerals, there were gross proceeds of over $7 billion, yet because of deductions, mining only paid taxes on 30% of them, because over $5 billion were taken in deductions. Right now, mining taxes is also one of the smallest portions of revenue for the general fund, making up only a little more than 1%. By changing deductions and calculating net proceeds, we would be taking a step towards the long-term goal of diversifying our revenue sources. In 2011, many members who are still a part of this body supported a bill which would adjust the net proceeds on minerals. But under today's circumstances, we must be bolder than ever before to prevent the devastating impact of the potential cuts to education and healthcare. As our state aims to mitigate the 1.2 billion deficit, it is irresponsible to simply balance our budget on the backs of our children and those who rely on critical healthcare services without considering real revenue reform. We urge you to include the removal of mining deductions in Senate Bill three.
Caller with the last three digits, five seven seven, please slowly state and spell your name for the record. You have two minutes and may begin.
Hi, this is Chris Bailey, C H R I S D A L Y, Nevada State Education Association, the voice of Nevada educators for over 100 years. Senators, certainly you remember the hearing that you had on proposed cuts to K-12 education the other day, $156 million in very, very painful cuts. You know, we can do better in Nevada than just cutting our way or trying to cut our way out of this hole. We can expand revenue. That is why educators across the state have called for the legislature in this special session to come up with at least $1 of new revenue for every dollar cuts that you proposed. Interestingly enough, if you were to take a look at these tax deductions from the mining tax, if you were to eliminate them and tax on the whole gross, you would very nearly come up with the amount of money that you would need to backfill all of the K-12 education cuts. We are joining in with our partners, asking the legislature to be brave and to be bold and to do better by Nevada.
Madam Chair, that concludes public testimony.
I'll just double check I heard that one correctly. We don't have anybody else on the line at this point who wishes to give public testimony.
Correct, Madam Chair.
Okay. So at this point then, we will now close the hearing on Senate Bill three. We want to thank our very capable and able and wonderful broadcast staff for being able to facilitate our public comments so we can have participation, and thank everyone for being patient and staying online despite some technical difficulties and some missed hearing on my part, so I appreciate that. Thank you to members of the committee for participating in the hearing as well. We're going to go ahead and close our hearing on Senate Bill number three. That will also conclude the business on the agenda before today's committee of the whole meeting, and with that, Senator Woodhouse.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the Senate Committee of the Whole do rise and report to the Senate.
I second that motion.
Wonderful. You've heard the motion, are there any remarks? Seeing none, those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. The committee of the whole is dissolved, and the Senate will be in a brief recess.
Oh, sorry. The Senate will come to order. Order of Business Number Four, Reports of Committee.
Madam President, your committee of the whole has considered Senate Bill number three, signed Senator Nicole Canizaro. Chair, end of report.
Thank you. Order of Business Number Sixteen, Remarks from the Floor. I don't think we have. Senator Canizaro, did you have a motion? Oh, Senator Settlemeyer? Hi.
Thank you, Madam President. Order of Business Sixteen?
Yes.
Okay. In that respect, we've always had some things happen here the last couple of days within the body, to say the least, or more appropriately, the other body. And in that respect, I wanted to thank the staff in this building for everything they've done to keep all of us safe, the yeoman's work they've done during the nighttime to clean and disinfect this place, and even bring in other crews to do just that, to make sure all of us are safe. And that could not have been done without you guys and the staff, and we owe you all, we all owe you an extreme debt. And in that same respect, I personally think that we ought to take a break for a couple of days, allow staff to catch up. There's so much information we've asked of the executive There's so much information we've asked of the executive department that has not been provided to us that our staff still needs in order to make the right decisions. Myself, I think we ought to take a break for several days in order to let this go through, let us all get retested, make sure we keep you safe, and get it done that way. That's just my own personal opinion, because we need that time and we need that safety. But again, thank you and all the staff for all you've done for us.
Thank you, Senator Settlemeyer. Are there any more remarks? All right. Senator Canizaro?
Thank you, Madam President, and I would echo my colleagues' comments, and a huge thank you to all of our amazing staff, not only for facilitating our public comment, being able to get all of our agencies before us so we can ask the right questions, being present here with us to make sure that we're still doing the business of the legislature, and of course, keeping everyone in the building safe and healthy. We owe you an extreme debt of gratitude for being able to do our jobs that we've been elected to do, and we frankly couldn't do it without you and all of your amazingly hard work. So we're very, very grateful, and just want to thank you for all of that. At this point in time, Madam President, I would move that the Senate stand in adjournment until the hour of 9:00 a.m. on Monday, July 13, 2020.
Thank you. We have a motion to adjourn until Monday at 9:00 a.m. Are there any remarks? All right, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. We're adjourned until Monday, guys. Thank you.
Senators, for those who have boxed lunches and dinners for tomorrow, we will just push them one day forward, okay?